... responsibilities lie in, and we've got some uniform federal regulations we need to abide by in the super circular. This is a flexible spending program, gives us a lot of leeway to be able to do a lot of the things that we want in our community that we can't always do with regular funds, particularly where housing, social services, infrastructure improvements, facility improvements, and nonprofits, and some redevelopment activities. And we are inclined to do that based on the local conditions of the community and in compliance with HUD national objectives. Basically, there are three national objectives we try to meet. I want to make sure we're either removing slum and blight from the community, meeting a local urgent needs such as in the response of a disaster, hurricane, other catastrophic events. Some of this money's been used in response to coronavirus pandemic. And in general, we have to serve the low to moderate income community. And that would be individuals or households that are below, 80% are below the metropolitan statistical area income. So for Pearland, that looks like this, and you can see in the red boxed-in area that for a household of four, the most that that household can make and qualify for the program would be $85,600. And it goes down from there based on the different levels of low income. And on a per-household basis, that dollar amount changes as well. If we were to do what would be referred to as an area benefit project, such as a drainage project, or sidewalks that serve a larger part of a community, a neighborhood, and not just one individual household, we would be using the funds in a census block group. And that would have to be, for Pearland, 45% or more low to moderate income. And that's because we get an exception. We're referred to as an exception criteria city because we don't have census tracts or census block groups where the upper quartile of our census block group is comprised of 51% or more low to moderate income. So they give us a break in that regard. And this is good reference information for future projects that are HUD-funded but that don't come directly to us from HUD, like the General Land Office projects. How they give us this money is based on one or two formulas. We actually fall under Formula A, which is based on population, poverty, and the housing stock in the community. The difference between Formula A and Formula B is that in Formula B, it's really targeting entities or communities that have more pre-1940s housing. Pearland being a relatively newer community, we don't qualify under that formula, and that's the formula where you see a larger amount of money coming to your city. So just a quick breakdown of what the consolidated plan means. It's basically consolidation of the planning process over a longer-term period of time than the action plan process provides. So within that, we would be doing a five-year plan. And in each year of that plan series, we're planning to spend a specific allocation of money that HUD gives us and notifies us of prior to the planning process beginning. And for FY23, that dollar amount came to us at $478,854. And that's what, a portion of what we're talking about today. But the consolidated plan is the overarching piece that we have to put together every five years to kind of lay out the priorities for that period of time. And in doing so, we come up with a community assessment that kind of updates HUD and the public as to where we stand as far as how we get to those priorities. So we look at things like income, economic conditions of the community, social services issues that might face a particular nonprofit or type of nonprofit, and the housing and community development priorities that might be in line with what our community looks like. We also provide a landscape of what the diversity and demographic issues in our community look like, and that's all part of the plan. We also look at the housing cost burdens. The comprehensive housing affordability strategy information is what we look to to provide that. And it basically just kind of gives a layout of the cost burdens associated with operating a household in Pearland, whether it's a renter or owner-oriented household. And these are just some of the statistics that apply for the data set that we hope to be able to use to complete the plan. And this is just some additional information that goes into the housing section of our consolidated plan. One thing to note is the gross rent numbers have gone up a little bit from 2013. And again, a large part of that is coronavirus pandemic-related. When we put the plan together, we also did a survey that allowed the public to participate in the process, 36 questions in English and Spanish, and covered the list of items that you see there. The demography was provided in the sample of the participants. They provided us with a breakdown of who they were, basically. And we asked questions about non-housing, housing, facility, and infrastructure areas that we would incorporate into the plan. And as a result of that, we were able to come up with some different levels of priorities for doing certain things in the community. A lot of the things that the people in Pearland support are things that we're already doing. And considering most of the community dynamics that showed up in the comprehensive housing affordability strategy, other dynamics of the community, economic and otherwise, it makes good sense for us to stick with a lot of what we've been doing for the last five years. So all of these things are medium to high priority, and we will be able to do most of them. The two very high priority issues are sidewalk improvements and flood drainage improvements. But of course, we don't receive the kind of money from HUD to be able to do much with that. So we will continue to prioritize those. They're in the consolidated plan. We just won't fund them this year. And if something happens that brings more money to the community, or if we need to match something else with CDBG, we can bring these priorities up and use the funds in that way. For the most part, we're going to continue to fund things the way we have in the past. The items in green are the things that are included as high priority. There's some medium priorities in yellow. And again, the blue is the things that are high priority, but we just can't fund right now. So specifically, we have presented this information before, just reiterating where the money's actually going. The $271,049 is scheduled to go to the Counseling Connections for Change organization to aid them in making some improvements to a facility that they now rent. But we are using ARPA funds to help them acquire that property outright, so they don't have to pay rent, they can operate sustainably, and use that facility to do the good work that they've been doing. And that was a competitive application that we put out in April, and they were the clear winner in that regard. We'll continue to fund their work as far as mental health services goes. I think there's a small amount of rental assistance work that still needs to be supported in the community. The Neighborhood Center does that work. And we've also decided to continue the recommendation that childcare services in the aftermath of the pandemic, as people get back to work and need childcare for their children after care. That's an important resource that needs to be funded as well. For years now, we've funded home repairs in the Pearland area for those that qualify. So the elderly, disabled, anyone low income that applies and qualifies for the program, they're able to take opportunities to get us in a position where we can make small repairs to things that may be challenging for them to complete with their own income. And oversight and management piece, I think, is of note. You know, generally, we're able to take 20%, and we always budget for that. We don't always spend it. But in this year, I think we recognize that there were some higher priorities that needed consideration based on the requests and the recommendations that came out of the plan. So we're going to budget for a little bit less than that and take 14.3% this year, and that should cover our needs in that regard. So lastly, I just want to go over the timeline of events that have occurred and what we have to look forward to. Again, I mentioned that we've had two activities that were citizen involvement-oriented that, based on the conditions we were dealt with, we put forth those in July. Unfortunately, HUD disagreed and said that those two needed to be more than 30 days apart. So that's what we're dealing with now. And on the 8th of September, we did get a written notice that they would disapprove the plan based on that and some other factors. Most of the others, I believe, were relatively arbitrary. Some of them might even be capricious. And at the end of the day, we're going to publicize that information with our response to make sure that the transparency is available to see what that looks like. But Mayor, you and I know we've been through this before, and we generally come out to our advantage when we address those things like we have. And I think we should do that as well with this situation. But for now, we're okay with this activity and the 30-day comment period that's associated with it being the main thing that we need to do to kind of get them off our backs and move forward to get the plans accepted by HUD. So we should be able to resubmit this prior to October the 21st, which will take it out of our hands and put it back in HUD's lap to consider. And with that said, Mayor, I'm going to end the public hearing, staff report, and pass the balance back to the dice.
All right. Thank you for that, Joel. Always a good report. So with that, we'll turn to the public, those wishing to make a public comment on the CDBG funding program for FY23. Can go to the podium, give your name and address. You have three minutes to speak. Second request, for those wishing to make a public comment here. And third and final time, those wishing to make a public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to City Council for questions, comments, concerns from you guys.
That was kind of a quick one, Joel. To reiterate, last year had, at HUD, done last year what they're doing, what they did this year, we wouldn't have had all of the turmoil that we had last year.
Correct. And I think the good news is they gave us a decent layout of the concerns they had very early, so we can address those. But again, I think some of them are kind of, you know, like, they don't hold water. So we'll visit that at a later date.
Instead, they waited till Christmas last year.
Yes.
So with that, we will end this documented public hearing, and we'll move to public hearing number two. It's on the FY23 proposed city property tax rate. With that, we'll turn to staff report.
So Mayor, this is another public hearing, but this does meet the statutory requirements within the timeframes under new SB2. We did hold a public hearing about a month ago before you got into some of the more serious discussions on the budget. The property tax rate as presented tonight for your second reading supports this budget. Property taxes fund a good portion of the general fund and most all of our debt service. So those obligations are being met with this. This rate of the 623 and change is about 11% less than the current rate. And that's a function of the strong values. And as we've said several times, for Homestead properties, this will actually be a property tax dollar deduction. So we are able to keep up with inflation, increase service demands and expectations, and provide that lower rate on this. So nothing really to add. There's materials. I would suggest we do have the matters for action, so obviously, public hearing and any comments and questions, but then we can incorporate those into the actual budget new business items that are coming up right after this. Nothing to add.
Yeah, I was going to say, we'll turn it to the public here for just a second, but, you know, for questions, comments from council, we're going to go right into the budget items. So we'll keep our comments until we get into the new business number one, and then we can certainly answer any questions that may come from the public. So with that, we're going to turn it to the public, those wishing to address council on this public property tax rate. Can go to the podium, give your name and address. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, council. My name is Galen Devine. I live at 2135 Venetia Drive, Pearland 77581. And again, I just implore you to really reconsider the budget and the tax rate that is being proposed. I know that at the last meeting I was at, there was some conversation about maybe taking some of the one-off items and kind of holding those for sales tax dollars. And that was talked about, but then, I don't know if in private that was fleshed out. It wasn't fleshed out in public. Using sales tax dollars that come in to be able to offset some of that instead of burdening us, the taxpayers, with such a big tax rate increase all in one year, knowing that there's going to be a 13.1% rate increase in our water bill come January, that is going to continue to go up and up and up over the next four to five years. So I just, I just would love for you to find a way to get it down as low as possible and then revisit it maybe six months and see if there's some things that you can do differently, really think outside the box, and really try to take care of us, the citizens, who are working so hard with inflation, gas prices, grocery bills being hit at all sides. And I would dare say, if we polled the audience, there's not a single person here who's getting a 5.5% COLA raise at work. And while I know that we need to keep employees and we need to work hard to help employees, maybe we could stagger that or do something instead of hitting us all at one time in one year. Because I know at my company, there's no way I could afford to give all my employees a 5.5% COLA raise at one time with all the costs of goods and services going up as well. So maybe be creative in ways that we can help keep employees without burdening the taxpayers with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Second request, those wishing to speak and address the public portion of our tax rate public hearing.
Mayor, may I ask if staff could just put the rate up? Because I don't know if everyone in the public, so maybe they know what it actually is. Item that was published, obviously, but it's the 623765. And again, that is a reduction from the current by 11% from the current 72-some out cent.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I'll do last and final time, those wishing to address council on the public tax rate, on the proposed property tax rate. Seeing none, we'll move then to close this public hearing, and we'll move to new business item number one. Member Cozal, would you present that, please?
Well, Mayor, consideration of possible actions, second and final reading of ordinance number 1619. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We actually have two people who signed up to speak and address new business item numbers one, so Mayor Protem, if you'd present them.
Thank you, Mayor. First up, Adam Carroll. You know the drill, name, address, five minutes. And thank you for being here.
Thank you. Adam Carroll, 12511 Britt Road, 77581. I'm here representing the Pearland Police Officers Association. And for the first time, I'm up here with no notes, no talking points, so this could be a colossal fail. What I have done is I have prayed on it, and I've just asked the Lord to give me the right words to say. And I've prayed for each of you guys specifically to kind of give you some peace and a little less stress in your life, because I know what you're doing right now is a stressful ordeal. You know, I've been through this a lot of times with most of you up there. I feel your pain. You want to make everybody happy, and you can't. You know, none of us ever can in whatever we're doing. I understand that. We get it. So I think I'm going to stay true to course where we started with this at budget talks number one, with retention, and that, you know, PD started out asking for six officers, six dispatchers, and it's been dwindled to one officer, I think, two dispatchers. But in fairness, every department head out here has probably had staff cut, wants, needs I get that it's a tricky ordeal, and I feel for you guys. I really do. We've asked for the 20 additional hours of sick buyback and a 1% across the board for everybody. And I feel like we need to stick with that and appreciate that you have already, you know, kind of blessed the 20 additional hours, and we much appreciate that. And as odd as it sounds, that little 1% addition that we've asked for, I've had more professional staff from all across different departments in the city come forward and say, thank you for that, because it means a lot. And I appreciate those that have come forward and let me know that. It helps me to get up here and do this. So I know you got a tough decision to make, and I think I would be remiss to also not say this. I have to say this. I know good and well, I've spoken to everybody up here, I know there is nobody up here that is anti-police. I know that. And I want you to know that I know that, that we know that. I really feel like you guys do love the staff and you do the best that you can for them. So know that we know that. And in closing, so it's not a colossal fail, I love each and every one of y'all. Nothing you can do about it. God bless you.
Thanks. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you for those comments. Next up, Matthew Kozloski. You get to follow that. Name, address, five minutes, and thank you for being here.
Matthew Kozloski, 701 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Thank you, council members, for your dedication and continual investment in our citizens' safety. The Pearland Professional Firefighter Association is fully aware that this year's budget proposal deeply affects the citizens of Pearland. I want to share some more information to help shed light on the sacrifices your firefighters are facing. We are continuously working overtime to meet the needs of the citizens. Unfortunately, working overtime has become the standard and not the exception. The positions in the budget would help make certain we are not jeopardizing safety due to gaps in coverage. Since last October, there has been over 37,000 hours of mandatory overtime, where firefighters are required to return to work on their days off in order to keep your emergency vehicles in service. The additional positions for the fire department ensure that the citizens are getting provided the highest quality, highest quality of consistent coverage and emergency response. These positions in the budget would be one of the first steps in the direction that would provide relief for our members. The positions would be a catalyst to keep each emergency response unit in service every day. In order to maintain our response, we are also facing difficulties with our response due to an aging fleet. We are in need of replacement apparatus to be able to respond 24/7. Thank you for keeping us ready to respond to our citizens' needs with the apparatus that are in this year's budget. Our fire department has some of the highest-quality trained men and women who serve our citizens. To help retain these personnel and keeping their mental health at the forefront of our council's vision, I ask you to please support this year's budget, including but not limited to the increasing personnel and emergency vehicles on the budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Matthew. Words well spoken. Was there any, that was all the comments? All right. So with that, we're going to turn to questions and comments from our council. But before I do, I'd like to make sure the council's aware, you know, we have a budget, and then we have a tax rate behind it. So whatever budget we approve, whether it's this, or we amend it, or whatever, and it has an effect on the tax rate, we then need to approve the tax rate to fund the budget. So if you're really looking to drop or change the tax rate, then what is it in the budget you want to change in order to get to that tax rate? Does that make sense? Or have I done a colossal failure, as our good sergeant put up there? But so it has to go one before the other. So with that, I'm just going to open it up to council for questions, comments, and Mayor Kamcar.
I need to, I had some items for supplementals. I can address those, but I need to, I've got some other brief comments, and then I will, I will try to hit to what your question was, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank the staff and the council and the public for staying tuned on this budget for FY23. It's been a long process, I want to say, starting back in February, and it's kind of been continuing on at an ebb and flow, continued through the summer, and now it's really, really picked up in like the last probably six weeks. I think everybody's put a ton of hours into getting us to the point where we are today. And there have been many public meetings, many PowerPoints, many, many slides, to the point it makes you fall asleep. And a lot of citizens' comments, a lot of positive feedback. But I want to take a minute to discuss a part of this process that's really just soured me, and it's probably just happened really recently. But I received a phone call from a stakeholder group about Friday at about 8:00, and the representative of the stakeholder group was calling to convince me that the budget that we currently are looking at, which is the largest in the history of the city, was in my best interests to pass, one that I have been a vehement and ardent critic of because the spending has been so robust in areas that I didn't necessarily agree with. A budget, in this case, that meant collecting almost $11 million more than we collected last year from families and businesses. So I have been a critic of the spending. That's not new news. But what is new to me, and what I'm very uncomfortable with, is this city employee thought it was in their best interest to make that call to me, to try to influence me, that this was a good idea for me to come off the board and then start supporting. And what I would tell you is, there are ways to do things. We have a lot of meetings here, and we have a lot of comments. You can send an email, you can send a written letter, you can send a lot of things. But, you know, the citizens sent me here, and all of us here, to watch their pocketbook, watch out for their best interests, you know, the interests of the many, not just the few, not just one small group. And so I have to balance all that. But the venue to have that discussion is not in a late-night call to convince me that this is the path. The venue to do this is that that microphone back there on the public record for all of us to see. So I just want to go and say, I have my problems with this budget. I also think there are parts of this budget that are really good. I do not want to introduce a transparency problem here. The citizens deserve better. The staff who have worked hard deserve to have their concerns met. And the worst thing that I think wrapped it up for me that was like the most galling is the member who called me, this staff member, had little to no input on this budget. They are being told that they need to call certain members of the council, and I have a problem with that. And so I'm just leaving that there. It happens. I told them that was inappropriate. I weighed it. I obviously had to weigh it. I was very upset after that call. Since calmed down, I'd like to think that I'm even-handed, but there is a way to go about having a political discussion and injecting Pearland employees into the discussion is not necessarily what I would think is a good idea. So I just want to put that out there. Now I'd like to get to my items on the budget. Can we get my agenda supplement pulled up? So the only thing, we've tried a lot of ground here. This budget is $110 million. It's $10.7 million, bigger than the last one that we did roughly about a year ago. What has changed definitively in this time is kind of where we are in the economy. We are at a very, very different place than we were 12 months ago. I don't know how else to say it, but you can feel it. You see it when you turn on the news, and inflation is that discussion. I'd like to scroll down just a little bit. This is from the Wall Street Journal, I want to say, what is that, the 22nd? So what is it, last Friday? I'm just going to read a couple of quick excerpts. "This time, the markets understood quite clearly what the Federal Reserve meant. Inflation is too high, and it will likely take a recession to get it down. This is not new news, but we are being dragged into a recession. And every time our friend Uncle Jerome speaks up, that recession gets worse. That recession will eventually mean people are going to have to be unemployed. Unemployment is below 4% right now, which is essentially as high as it can get. And for this to change, they're going to have to keep raising." Can we scroll to the next page? There we go. I want to read this quote, because it struck me when I read this on Friday. The second paragraph, "It is unprecedented for the Fed to predict so steep a rise in unemployment." Quote, "Before recession has already begun," quote, Derek Tang of LH Mayor, Monetary Policy Analyst, a financial research firm, wrote on Twitter, "They are trying to tell us there will be a hard landing. There is no other way." We are raising the largest budget in the history of the city, and we are essentially being told, and other people are really smart, are saying, we're about to go into recession if we're not already there. I do not think it is good economic policy for the citizens of Pearland to be taxed $11 million more than they were last year, when we are literally looking at... when we are literally looking, staring into the recession. I guess we have to have more sympathy for the people who actually pay the wages, who actually were here to protect and serve and understand that. I'm not saying that we have to go back to the no-new rate, but the largest budget in the history of the city is a struggle for me. Can we go to four slides down? All right, it's probably closer to five. There's kind of a graph, the yellow line, and this is it. Also, in the 22nd, this is just grocery prices from the U.S. Labor Department. Eggs up 39.8%, butter 24.6%, coffee 18.7%, milk is up 17%, snacks, whatever that is. Mr. Carroll, you like snacks, 16.7%, chicken 16.6%, breakfast 16.4%. I mean, you all are seeing this because you go to the grocery store. But this is hard quantitative data. The cost of just feeding your family is going up. And the city of Pearland is saying, the cost of owning a home or a business here, we're going to get $11 million more dollars than we got last year. It's real money. And I agree, we need to spend some of these items, we do need to spend on. But it is really hard to go and throw the throttle as far as we can and collect as much as we can on day one, which is January 1. The last item is going to be two more pages down, and then I'm out of here. One more. There you go, Tom. This is James MacIntosh, you may know him, but I think that headline kind of says it. "The market still isn't priced for a proper recession, stocks and bonds." But I'll read that first paragraph. "The stock market is almost always late to wake up to the threat of recession, but it's increasingly hard to miss the warnings from the Federal Reserve. Not only might there be a recession, but the Fed has no intention of stepping in to save investors this time." I ask, who's going to save the taxpayers? There is no Pearland money. It's just your money. And so I would now beseech the council, we have talked about some proposals around an allocated fund balance. We've talked about some proposals around what we're doing on internal service fees. We've talked some of the items that are the prepared items, that are the asked items. It was close to $3 million there. Only thing I'm going to say, I cannot support this budget as proposed. I want to be as clear as possible. I want to be as clear as possible. I would like the no-new rate. But the reality is, there needs to be five people to pass a budget, and I don't see five people that want to go do the no-new rate. I am willing to meet in the middle on a rate that starts with a 5 and not a 6. Can we go to that last page? On that supplement, I'm sorry, Josh, I screwed you up. There we go. Thank you. This is literally this. This is the first page of the budget book. Alex is not making up a story. It's 10.7 more that we are trying to collect versus last year. The no-new rate is .54. The proposed rate is .62. I am telling the members on this council in no uncertain terms, I can meet you somewhere around a 5. A high 5. I can get there. But first, you have to say this budget is not the one that we want, or this rate is not the one that we want. I'm willing to do that, and I'm willing to work on any of these proposals. I'm stretching my arm out as much as I can. But we are going into a recession. It's going to be hard. And at the end of the day, we're not even addressing the water issue of the 13.1%. This doesn't even touch water. We have to understand that. But let's do something on this, and some of these dollars, we can wait till June of next year for the allocation change at mid-year. Those are my comments, mayor. I appreciate you giving me the ability to say them, so thank you.
Thank you, council member. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Hernandez. Thank you, mayor. So I'll say, I'm glad to hear that you're willing to meet somewhere in the middle this time. I think we've had plenty of conversations up here. I've tried my college best to figure out a scenario where no-new revenue works, and I just can't figure out how to get there and meet all of the things that we've set our priorities. So with that, I did have some items that I had put forward at the last meeting where I thought could bring it down a little bit, about 1.8 pennies roughly. And I've since had conversation with staff. But maybe, did you have a little bit more clarification on where some of your compromise items might be?
Yes, sir. Just for the record, Clay, I did call you earlier this week and ask that you have one penny possibly somewhere. Can I just get that on the record, that call did happen and that request was made? Okay, great, thank you. So I'm going to just say, Clay did his job and got the one penny because he's the best employee that he has, and I'm rooting for him to find that one penny. So there's one there. 1.8 million in rollover. Yeah. I'm talking in millions of dollars here. 5.89 is roughly 3.8 pennies. Roughly, roughly $6 million. 1.8 of rollover, 1.2 million of the funding highlights. You had a couple of exclusions on those funding highlights, Adrian, from our last meeting. That's $3 million. 1.5 from the internal service funds. It's 2.8 over contributing. I would leave 1.3 over contributing. So I'm right now at about $4.5 million, which is aggie, 2.5 pennies. And then if Clay finds that other penny like he did if we said he would, if requested, I get to my 6.1, which puts us at 5.5899. I would ask, in this negotiation, that we honor the request for the 1% that came in and find $750,000 to be relocated, reallocated. I think with all of the negativity that we have with the recession, the costs going up, if we can get that 1% there, I would make that request. But I leave that to the altar of the body. But there's $6 million, I think is there. I would give you a rate of .5899.
Right. So I'll say, I guess with your comments, and knowing and hearing also what Chairman Powell has said about, you know, the job market's going to get really, really rough. And I know we've said up here that one of the good things about working for a government institution is not that you're going to get the spoils of a great economy, but rather you have that stability. And I feel like, you know, if we're looking for these cuts and we're trying to make compromises that where we are with the 5.5, from my perspective, would help us to get to where we need to be with a lower tax rate, to give the taxpayers a little bit of an offset, which I get, mayor. I know we talk a lot about not trying to conflate the enterprise side with the general fund side. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's dollars out of the pockets of the taxpayers and the ratepayers. So trying to find some offset and a compromise there, I could probably get to where you need to be and maybe even be willing to look forward to the internal service funds being funded off of some of the sales tax, potentially. But I think if we come to that agreement up here and there's some consensus that that actually will be the priority and actually will happen, that's the most important thing to me. Because those have been a big push from my perspective, setting up those savings accounts, knowing that we need to save for future investment. I think that's part of what's gotten us to where we are today is kind of, you know, kicking the can down the road with a lot of different things. I don't want to continue doing that. So, you know, if we can't get a consensus on that, I don't want to budge on the internal service fund spending. I would like to see that move forward because I do want to prepare for our future spending. But for the other items, trying to get down to that, you know, 60 or slightly below 60 territory, I think there's a pathway to get there. I just think we've got to have that really clearly delineated. But I think it's probably time for some other members to give their input on that.
Any other questions, your comments?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, thank you very much. You know, I just wanted to kind of put a few things out there, and I can appreciate what Member Kamkar and Member Hernandez are talking about. And, you know, at the end of the day, I think, me as an individual, I look at buying down my future debt and understanding exactly what it is we're buying down into the future. And I look at today's tax rate or the proposed tax rate along with our proposed debt service rate, and our proposed debt service rate's going down 13%, which means that we're buying down our debt, we're spending money, we're reducing our debt overall. Our overall tax rate's going down 11%. So at the end of the day, our taxpayers are actually seeing a decrease in their rate. At the end, we don't really have control over our assessed values. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, the decisions that are made up here are a direct result of those assessed values going up. You know, so we have mechanisms in place to control tax appraised values, to control our taxes for the individual taxpayers through our state legislature and whatnot. But I see a win-win. But at what point, how far down can we go? And it's, there is a point of diminished return, right? And I've said this before, we are that one wall between Harris County and Brazoria County. I will continue to invest personally and up here in every breath that I have in our first responders, whether it's fire, whether it's police, equipment, and so on. But I'm also going to invest in drainage. We don't want to see another Harvey, especially in our older areas of town, whether it's Old Town Site, Garden Road, Roy Road, Green Tea, you name it. All those areas are those people, those individuals that have built the city that we know today. I'm not going to forget those individuals and let their neighborhoods diminish while we focus on reduced tax rates and being able to just say to the public, hey, we reduced taxes, look at us. I don't want to do that. I want to have the best city. I want to have a city that people want to come to. I want to have a city where families say, I want to bring my kids to Pearland because they have a great school system and because they have a great city, and they support our fire, PD, and they really believe in their city, and they take care of their city. So that's where I am. Do I want it to go down further? Absolutely. Yeah, there's no question about it. But I think a 13% reduction in tax rate and a 13% reduction in overall, I mean, a 13% reduction in debt service and a 11% reduction in tax rate, I think that steps in the right direction. That's all I've got.
Mayor Carbone?
Yeah, chime in. Where to start? I mean, we can go into some of the Wall Street Journal articles on page 104. It talks about 10% annual growth in wage and salary. And the other article provided was an 8.4% increase in median. Inflation's here, and we're having trouble filling positions. Sergeant Carroll talked about retention. I mean, the city's really good. If you have good employees, you overload them and work them to death until you force them out. And I don't know that we can afford any other, any additional turnover. Like Councilman Barry said, this, and I guess I truly believe this is, this budget's the best interest of the citizens. And I have no doubt that we're on the extreme other side, but I believe that you think it's the best. So I'm with you there. And that's why I think it's a good budget. It funds what needs to be funded. It takes care of what needs to. It lowers the rate. And for the first time that I can remember, it lowers everyone's individual home tax bill, period. No caveats. It's a decrease in rate strong enough to even if you are maxed out at your 10% cap, you still get relief. And looking at inflation, that's, the charts provided, that's pretty damn good. It's the one thing that maybe is going down, is butter and snacks and everything else is going up. And I appreciate coming off and trying to come to a compromise now. But the bottom line is, this is the seventh meeting we've had. There hadn't been any consensus. There's been consensus on a few items, staff's taken and run with it. But I'm hesitant to make changes here at the final second reading, just as a, I don't know. I'll leave it at that, mayor.
Mr. Cozal?
Yes, thank you, mayor. In regards to where we are in the budget right now, like Member Carbone said, we have had seven meetings. To me, my feeling is we should have fleshed this out prior to tonight. And to sit here and come to the last minute and try and hold it up in the 11th hour, I think is wrong. At the last meeting, I spoke on the water rates. We have invested our time and money in a water treatment facility, I mean, a water treatment plant. We have two wastewater treatments that are on the brink of 100%. One of them, as Robert said, last meeting, we're at 75 at Berry Rose. And if you want to live like Jackson, Mississippi, just call a citizen there. They've been under boil notice for over 30 days. I don't think we, as citizens here in Pearland, want to live that way. I think we want to be able to turn on our water spigot, have good, clean water come out, and not have to worry about boiling water and have something to four to six months being down the road. Currently, these facilities were built in the 60s, and they are in major need of upgrades. And as far as water rates go, it's not fun. But if you want to be able to not turn on your water faucet and be able to have clean water come out, we could be down that road. That's all I've got to say, mayor.
All right. Mayor Cade?
I've, I don't think this budget's the best that I hoped for. After hours of studying it, trying to look for places to cut, and finding nothing that I think would meet the approval of enough council members to pass, I think it's the best that we're going to get this year. I do think it is a compromise in itself because no one department is getting everything they ask for. And the taxpayers are getting some relief. I like what Member Carbone said. And over the years of coming to council meetings before I was on council, I always listened to Member Carbone about budget stuff. So when he says things, you know, I tend to listen to him. So I appreciate what he says. I can live with a compromise. The alternative of not supporting this budget and it reverting to the no-new revenue is, would cause significant negative, a significant negative impact on the city and ultimately on the residents. And I'm not willing, I'm not willing to do that. I can't live with that. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Well said. Member Cade? Mayor Owens?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's two sides of a budget, you know? There's the enterprise fund, which is water wastewater, and the general fund, which is your property taxes that pay for everything else that would go through here. And those two budgets can't be mixed or mingled together. So that's, you know, you've got, what, $178 million wastewater plant going on right now, which those are dedicated funds through there. So, you know, the thing about it, I believe that the budget that we have this time, you know, you've got the two areas. You've got the bond areas that you've got, and then you've got the general fund and everything else that operates on the city in order to do that. So I think that the budget that's been put together for this year is a good budget. Probably not what we really wanted to do, but it's what we could do during this period of time. And we have to be conservative, just like we are with everything. We've got so much that we've spent on bonds anyway right now, and that's obligated out of the percentage that we have to pay for those bonds now that we're paying for them. And so that leaves us the balance of the money to do and operate, you know, the city. And I think, you know, if you looked at the total amounts, there's not left a whole lot to operate the city on once you take out the cost for the bonds that have already been sold or for other things. So I think it's a, the budget that we have this year is a good budget. Wish we could do more, wish we could drop the tax rate more. And I think, you know, everybody sitting up here, you know, pays taxes like everybody sitting out there pays taxes. So, you know, we're doing the best we can do. So, you know, we're doing the best we can do during this time, and we don't know what tomorrow brings, you know? If you take a look at today and this evening, what we've been looking at on this computer here, it's not a, not a lovely picture for tomorrow. And that's for all of us, in which we have no control over whatsoever. So, but I think, you know, we've done as much so far, I believe, and the staff's done a good job on putting the budget together. We've done what we could do with the dollars that we're going to be able to project to get into, you know, and be able to spend those dollars on the two sides. Like I say, on the budget, we've got outstanding bonds that we've purchased bonds and that's dedicated amount that has to go out of, out of the budget and then the balance is left over through there. So, like I say, I think it's, I think it's a good budget. I think that certainly wish we could do better. We dropped the price on it some, but, and all of us up here, we pay city taxes, just like everybody, like everybody's sitting out there. So, so I think that everybody has put a lot of interest in it and Clay and the staff has done a good job of putting a budget together. It's not, not what we really wanted, but it's what we really got, you know? And that's what we have, that we really have to operate on. And so I appreciate doing that and I appreciate, you know, the mayor and the council coming in and working with us, you know, through this process as, as completed within council and mayor every year to do that and working with the department heads and the city management side. So appreciate what's been done, wish it could be better, lay the rest of it's on you.
Let me, let me see if I can wrap this up a little bit and then we can, we can possibly move on. First off, I want to, this, this process has been a long budget process every year. It, it starts out with a, an opportunity for the council to kind of set society aside and we go and we talk about strategic priorities, listening to the people, hearing from the council and where do we want to go with our priorities? And staff takes that and runs with it as the guts of the budget, the priorities in the budget. And this particular year, this, this staff has, has brought forward what we set aside that day and talked about back in February, March, early March, whatever it was. So I want to thank the, the council, number one, for your time and investment in those meetings and getting to this point. Also know there's three new members who weren't a part of that, but I thank them for honoring and looking at the spirit of what that council action was with our, with our priorities. You'll get that opportunity come up this next year to be a part of that, that process. And it's, it's a real good, real good process. And then individually to council members, I, I enjoy and appreciate each and every one of you for your views, your, your opinions, your tenacity in, in trying to work through this. And, and it, it does, it is a process. It starts off slow, but then it gets really, really fast here at the end. And so I appreciate you, each and every one of you. I mentioned this actually to, to Member Cade. I called her on Friday to ask if she had any questions and we got to talking about it. And I said, you know, if, it's like a, it's like a really good law in Congress, if there is such a thing. Typically speaking, when everybody in the room doesn't like it for some reason or another, there might be a little piece here that they don't like, but the rest of them like it. There's a little piece over here that I might not like, but everybody else does. Kind of what you guys were saying there, I might not like this piece, but there's not enough votes to change that piece and vice versa. It's probably something that's good because we've fleshed it out as much as possible. Do we want to go down more? We all would want to go down more, but at what cost, what expense? You've heard about retention. We can cut some of those increases in, in COLA, but it's going to cost jobs that we can't fill now. And there are taxpayers that would say, I'm fine with that. I know taxpayers who are hardline conservatives that wish we would cut our police and fire in half. They've told me that. And they're hardline conservatives, wish we would cut firing police in half. That's just irresponsible to me, but I've heard that, okay, in this process. At the same time, the no new revenue rate, while last year's, according to our budget, was $99 million, to get to no new revenue, we would have to cut $13.9 million out of this budget. And it's, it's bleak, it's people. I actually asked staff to do this, I'm not going to ask them to go through this. We have a document of what it would look like to go to no new revenue. And go to no new revenue without cutting fire, without cutting police, without cutting sidewalks and, and streets and drainage. And it's bleak. It would cost quite a few people. In fact, it would, it would create a hiring freeze on about 62 positions that are open right now and, and then some. And it would be, it'd be pretty bleak. So I'm glad, I'm, I'm hearing, we really don't want to go there, but also know that we're going to address with our legislative delegation why the calculation was off so bad this year. Because there's something wrong with the worksheet and how it's calculated. And I just look at it, we've, but I also have an up here, and this is a call to, we've had a couple of people who'd like to go find from a penny to three pennies or something like that. At this table tonight, we haven't heard an amendment. And, and without an amendment, we have to vote on what's on the table. And I'm just asking, is there an amendment that's going to be coming forward because we, we would have to have that in order to vote? So I, I'm, I'm asking if somebody wants to make an amendment, make an amendment because otherwise we have the budget as is.
If I'm throwing you a ball, throw in that ball, baby. Help me, help me. I'm going to make an amendment to take out $4 million, so from 110 to 1, I guess, oh six and change, which is roughly two and a half pennies, maybe that gets us a shade under 60. I am open to what that discourse looks like, but I'm giving an amount. So, that's the amendment. $106 million.
106, 106 even or just 4 million?
4 million would be better.
Needs your number, I think.
Cut 4 million.
And real quick, and what you're saying, just, just real quick, what you're saying is?
4 million out of general fund expenses.
Right.
Or we have unallocated fund balance that we could apply 1.8 and still be above policy. You don't necessarily have to cut, you just buy down that number.
I heard a motion to, a motion to amend to cut 4 million from the general fund expenses. And then we would have to calculate the exact rate on top of this.
Yes, sir.
Get to it.
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
I heard you talking about taking money out, but I don't know where it was going.
Their pockets.
Okay. All right. So you just want to do a reduction of?
Correct. And I just want to be real clear, I'm not talking wages, I'm not talking staffing. There's 4 million there without us hitting personnel. I want to be clear as day on that.
So you just want to reduce the budget by 4 million?
Yes, sir.
And where did you want it to go? Is it a transfer somewhere?
Oh, I would like to just reduce the overall general fund expenses.
Drop the 4 million off the budget.
Yes, sir. We're talking little over two pennies, probably two and a half pennies.
Any, I guess, next question?
Yes, sir.
The, where do you want the money to come out of? What, what fund accounts do you want it?
We'd love for Clay to share a little bit of his unallocated fund balance, so this is less painful. I'm willing to look at some of the goodies that are not personnel, so I'd like the cops to have their telecom folks and the personnel. The more draconian ask would be harder, but we can do this while keeping all of the salary items that we discussed, the COLA. So that would be where I would go. The internal service funds, I know, are problematic for some, but not for others. There's 2.8 million in overfunding there. Let's call it half, let's call it 1.4. So we still overfund by 1.4. Let's put 1.4 back in the pockets of the taxpayers.
So 4 million you're talking about come out of the general fund because you?
Yes, sir.
The two areas?
I'm just trying to reduce general fund expenses.
It's obligated funds that we've already sold bonds and we're paying that indebtedness.
Yes, sir. I'm just trying to reduce general fund expenditures by 4 million. Yes, sir. It's 4 million on 110. It's not a gigantic number in the grand scheme.
So you don't have a, an area in the budget you want to reduce it by 4 million?
We, I'm trying not to manipulate, monopolize that conversation. I am open to any of the, there, there is a variety of proposals that Member Hernandez did, Member Cade at the last meeting. I am open.
Mayor, may I ask staff to go over what the unallocated fund balance spending is now? Because I think maybe there's some.
Right. So if you can go to page 91 of the material?
So this table shows the difference between the proposed rate and the different scenarios and where that comes from. So this does show that 11 million and, I'm sorry, the 7 million, but that is broken out between debt and operating. And then if you go to page nine, seven, the highlights? Sorry, slide seven, slide seven. So Member Hernandez, is this the one, if I could, this the one that you had highlighted in your earlier email? Slide seven, please. But that slide shows the new things that are in this budget that council has identified in the past for, in the run-up to this, that we said we needed to, to provide more investments. And so it would maybe logical that if we're going to start cutting from the recommended budget, the first place to go to would be the new things. These would be the things that, at least Member Hernandez had identified earlier, and that would get you a million six or more with what he'd suggested. But that would take out the officer, the positions and other kinds of things. You'd ask specifically about the unallocated fund balance. We, we've already dedicated the vast majority of our one-time expenses to be paid for out of fund balance. If we went further, much more than that, we'd be paying for recurring costs out of fund balance. So I know that's been a concern and that would be contrary to adopted council financial policies to do that.
Was the balance again that you said?
Sorry?
What was the balance that you said?
Uh, one, where was that, at 1.3, I think? We're, we're operating at a quote-unquote operating deficit, but we're using that deficit number to cover one-time costs already.
I guess that's maybe where I was misinterpreting some of the information presented previously. Do we even have 1.8 to draw against?
It's physically there, but you'd be paying for recurring costs at this point, yes.
I think that's what some members, well, one, we have a policy that states we can't do that. Two, I think we have members that have a, have heartburn over paying recurring expenses, maybe not one time, but recurring expenses out of that.
We could have somebody cut some of those. I mean, I just threw 4 million. To your point, the lights, like, is there a second? If there's not a second?
Well, and I, I was, I was given, Member Owens, his opportunity to ask you questions because I think that's where we were going. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on Member Cam Carr's motion?
I wasn't listening, say it again.
I, I'd like to make a motion to reduce the general fund expenditures from 110 million to its current number down to 4 million. It would be one in the 106 range.
I don't hear a second coming. You have something?
I'd like to call for the question.
Okay. Well, I was given an opportunity.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I don't think we've got the votes.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was looking for an amendment because we can talk about it, but until we have an amendment, we can talk about it. We have a question, we have a call for the question. I don't believe, Darren, that's debatable, so with that.
Just to be clear, this is on the budget as presented?
As presented, because that's, that's what's on the table. We don't have a, an amendment that we're considering. So Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote.
Mayor, real quick, for the record, can we have that the, the item failed, the amendment, the motion?
Oh, yes.
Or died for lack of a second?
The, the amendment did die for lack of a second. I think I did say I didn't hear a second.
Just for the, the minutes, please.
So with that, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote on the ordinance number 1619 as presented.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
No.
Member Cade?
Yes. Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No.
Motion passes 4 to 3.
All right. And with that, Darren, we have special second vote on this same line item and Member Coza's going to present that. You want to read that off and let him make that motion?
Yes, and, and just so for the benefit of the public that's here this evening, because the, this is the first year we've had a, a tax rate that is, it's only been in place for two years where you've had this opportunity, but because it is about the no new revenue rate, there's a provision in chapter 102 of the local government code that when we adopt our budget, it's actually two-step process. So there is a second vote. It's actually referred to as a ratification in the statute, but the council is required to consider a ratification of the budget, providing for a separate ratification on the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget.
So moved?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I was going to wait one second for him to come back, just out of professional courtesy. He'll be right back.
Yeah, we need the sergeant at arms to go get him.
Exactly. So, one second. Oh. Awkward. Glad we don't have a mic on in there. Waiting on you. Let's go. All right. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the second item under number one, where we, by law, we have to make the second motion that's ratifying, separate ratification for the property tax revenue increase reflected in the budget. So with that, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Knowing this is the last time we're going to be able to vote on this budget, I'd say okay.
Okay.
He said okay. He said okay.
Said okay. The motion passes.
All right. With that, we will move to item number two. Mr. Cam Carr, would you please present that?
It's consideration possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1620, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any updated staff?
Just to be clear for the record, this is adopting a property tax rate from the city of 623765, which will support the budget that was just adopted. And it would require five votes in the affirmative. The alternative to that would be the default by state statute is the no new revenue rate, which would mean $9 million plus or minus less into the general fund than the prior year. So that's the default if this were not to get the five votes, just to make it clear and the importance of that, and we would need five votes to pass this. Nothing added.
Any questions, comments from council?
Josh, can we pull up my last slide? I worked real hard on this this morning and I'd love to get it on the record.
Point click, I got it.
But I, I just, it's fun with numbers and it's, it's easier when it's more visually illustrated. It is the one before this, I think. There we go. So just to narrate this really quickly, so the blue is essentially really quickly. So the blue is essentially the budget general fund. It is aligned to the left. The 120 is the top number, 20 is the low number. And then you kind of see those numbers below. In 2013, which was, I guess, almost 10 calendar years ago, 58.5 million. We are now trying to do 110.2 million. If you look at the, the population and you go to the census, that is a divided number. But the general fund per head, per estimated citizen, the cost of government in the general fund is $842. It's real money. And it's a significant jump from the 769 last year and from the 695 just less than 24 months ago. I mean, that's government literally expanding before your eyes. This is what I'm having a hard time struggling with because I don't know that mom and dad are getting this much more service. I haven't felt it. If anything, all I hear is that the trash guy doesn't do heavy pickup now. Frontier does less, it seems like. So this is why I've had such heartburn. But this is the real growth of government happening before your eyes. It's there in the math. It's not Alex going in and wandering off. This is all based on the data. So I'm, I'm just struggling with this because that number is at a 45-degree angle from 2021 to there. And it doesn't feel great. So those are all my comments. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the, the bandwidth to do that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right. All right. Thank you for that. With that, we'll move to item number three. Mr. Carbone, would you present that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, action, second reading of ordinance number 1358-24. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Quick staff report?
Just real quick, as you've said, this is the non-development fees. We've pruned this down, but this supports our enterprise operation. And as councils well aware, significant improvements required and mandatory upon us to support that. A great deal of capital expenses, debt, all that's wrapped up into this. Nothing to add.
All right. Thank you for that. Questions, comments, concerns from council?
I'd like to make a motion that we, we do not increase any of the fees over what we did last year. So zero percent increase. I don't think that raising fee revenue during a recession is a good idea.
I'll just, as I said last time, some of these fees, Member Cam Carr, to me, are paid for by users. And so getting those direct users to pay for those fees, I think, is the best thing and not spreading that out. If not, it would, the cost would fall back on the budget that we just passed.
I understand. I just, I think there's a time and a place, and going into a recession is not that time or place for me. So like I said, I make the motion that we do not increase any of those fees over what was proposed last year or adopted last year. So zero increase.
We have a motion on the floor to amend. I don't hear a second, so motion fails due to a second.
Just for the minutes, I'd like that reflected that the motion failed.
All right. Any other questions, comments from council? This is second reading. With that, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
All right. Item number four, Mr. Hernandez, would you present that, please?
Consideration possible action, resolution number R2022-207. So moved.
We have a motion, second staff report, please.
Thanks, sir. This, first off, this is a capital project, and this is with the, the next step in the construction manager at risk process. We've been through the review of the project with the contractor and the architect and ready to present this. This is for the conversion of old fire station number four into a new public safety training building, which will be our police academy, and then also some reservations, renovations to the public safety building chiefly the former Bristory County Tax Office. We presented this last time, and the contractor, who we've been working alongside, Duratec, they also constructed the nearby, next-door animal shelter separately. But we are at a stage at that where we had moved in and we had to pull back out of there. And so the council was interested in having the contractor rep from Duratec come to the council meeting. And, and so we're ready for that. I don't know how you want to proceed with that, Mayor, just have them speak or?
Yeah, is the Duratec rep here? All right. Can you go to the podium, give us your name and, and address for the record, please? I think at the last meeting, there was questions asked and, you know, tried to be asked about, you know, we've got a, we've got a design and construction issue in one building on the same block that you're going to be, you know, hoping to build this, this next one. And you guys sent somebody that couldn't answer any questions on that.
Yes, he was, first of all, my name's David Rowe and 3505 River Forest, Richmond, Texas is my residence address. To answer the question, unfortunately, last time they were here for the reconstruction services, they're in pre-construction with regards to animal shelter, there was an issue with some areas of drainage in the outside kennels. And those items are being handled. He was not aware of those items and where we were with that. Bobby Mersky is here from our organization as well, heads up field operation. He can give a detailed analysis of what's going on with that. But it's in the process of being repaired at this time. We're taking care of it at no cost to the city or the taxpayers. And it's something that us in the design team feel like we need to take care of and do the right thing, this particular area.
I know there was some questions from council for them, not just on that. I mean, here we were, we, we were asking those questions and they couldn't answer them.
Yes.
We were shocked that y'all didn't send somebody that could have at least answered that question. It's two buildings over from the one that we're looking to redo here. And the fact that y'all didn't think that we would ask a question about it kind of, kind of blew our mind. And then secondly, you know, I'll just tell you from my perspective, when I asked the question about, when are you going to, are you going to hold the line on, on this CMAR, the guaranteed maximum price, the way he answered the question, I felt like you were putting a gun to our head. You got to answer this tonight or it's going to, you know, it's tonight or not. And so I'm, I'm giving, I'm just, I'm, you probably looked at the tape and that's probably not the way he should have answered that question.
Yes, sir.
When, you know, we, at least I took it, I took it as a threat.
I understand.
Okay. So where are we on the guaranteed maximum price now?
The guaranteed max price is still at $6,43,093.7 total. We have not adjusted or changed it, and we're prepared to hold that number. We value the city of Pearland very dearly. We understand our role as a contractor is to represent the taxpayers and the people here and to bring value to that process. We take it dear to our hearts as an organization, and we stand behind the work we put in place. We understand these buildings are here for the longevity. They're institutional facilities. We expect them to last. And from our organization as an owner, you have my commitment that we're going to deliver that product to you. If it's not right, we're going to make the corrections necessary to do so.
I'll open it up to questions from council. Because I, I mean, staff has, I think we have a good relationship with Duratec. We just wanted those on the record.
Yes, sir.
I think. So you guys have any questions?
Mayor Carbone? Yep. I guess one easy one, or assume easy, the, both these buildings, will there be some sort of warranty? I guess maybe specifically animal shelter? Does some warranty or workmanship? Yes. How long does that last typically? The, the warranties are in the specifications of the documents, and you have a one-year warranty from the date of substantial completion. And in addition, the specifications will have detailed extended warranties on mechanical equipment, roofing, and other type items like caulking. When does that start? What, when, when does that timeline start? Does that start the first time? Substantial completions when the, we have a, what we call a certificate of occupancy and that document is executed. Okay. So we already had a CO on the animal shelter? Yes, sir.
Councilman Carbone, yes, but we're working through some of those challenges with the situations going on right now to be able to have that warranty extended.
Okay. So it will be extended?
We are working on that.
We'll work with the city.
Yes.
We're going to make you happy. So it's extended through when we move back in? Is that when it starts?
Do, do we have an active CO?
We have been issued a certificate of occupancy.
But we, but we can't move in?
We cannot move in at this time.
We don't have the concrete.
Okay.
I'm, I'm playing word games.
Yeah.
I'm playing word games. What I'm saying is, we can't use the buildings, but yet we have an active CO. What you're hearing is, we think that needs to start over when we're actually able to move in. We need a guarantee from you guys that that's going to take place.
The building was ready for occupancy. You can move in the building. And then what happened was they moved in the building and because of this one issue back there, they thought it'd be in the best interest to go ahead and move out of the building. There still are animals over there right now. But if, for the warranty period, if we need to work something out, let, we will work with you on that warranty. I just need to take a look at all the warranty items that we're talking about as far as equipment. But we're going to make sure you have a warranty that's satisfactory to the city of Pearland. That still seems a little squirrely. I mean, the, the warranty needs to start when we can officially move in after we've already had to move out once. And if you give you, give us your word tonight, I'm cool with that. But I haven't heard you say the warranty starts when we move back in. I don't know the extent, you know, to certain, I would have to talk to certain subcontractors on that issue. The building, I'll tell you what, we'll give you the extended warranty. No more questions. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just one, just one, Mayor. Just real quick, how, how long do you think these repairs are going to take before we can move back in?
So the repairs are a particular area on outside kennels. They demoed the concrete. They're going to pour that section back so it drains properly to the expectation of the users. And so we had meetings in depth about how to do that. We got new drawings on how to do that. So that's going to get poured this week. It's going to take, you have to wait approximately 30 days for the curing because it has a sealer that goes on there. Once that 30 days occurs, we'll put the sealer and put the pins back. So I'm looking at probably a mid-November, no later.
Mayor, I would, I would like to also add, when I was on the Board of Trustees for the school district, we awarded Duratec a substantial portion of our $220 million bond. They did a great job for us. But, and I feel confident that they're going to make this right. I appreciate you being here.
Mayor, can I, oh, go ahead.
Member Cam Carr?
I just have one question. In order to, to get the certificate of occupancy, is there an inspection process or something that happens?
Right.
On a building?
Yeah, but keep in mind, the, the inspect, we, we have a certificate of occupancy. It meets the code requirements. And so that's what the certificate of occupancy does. And so yes, there's inspections, but you know, that's for the scope of what that is. And, and so there's warranty, questions that come up down the road, et cetera, et cetera, that won't be, you know, that's something else.
Mayor, I'd just like to add some comments. I, I think, I think it's great. We have more people that actually know what's going on in the project. Two weeks ago, we literally had somebody to, just kind of fudge their way through this and get a contract. And unfortunately, the city is a little too forgiving. I, I don't know if you guys know, but that is an extremely high-profile project that was extremely contentious. And when we have vendors, we actually do work with some good vendors that work on the library, where it comes in on time and under budget and things flush down the toilet or waste moves away it's supposed to. And it's incredibly embarrassing that like this very contentious, high-profile item that is around animals, and we know there's a lot of people who like animals and care about animals, we can't get the, the P to go the right way. And it is simple as, did you measure the one degree slope away? And I'm so glad that the, the guy who's here to clean up the mess is smiling and happy and, and we're going to make it better. But the reality is, is we're too forgiving on this. And this vendor is working on three other projects. This is a rehab project on one of them. And, and most people who know, know a rehab is actually harder than building from scratch. I have zero confidence that this vendor is going to do the right, be able to figure out all the problems until it's clearly visible that there's a problem. When the P wasn't going down the road, it was clearly visible there's a problem. But we have issues with ACs. We have issues with fire stations that don't drain. It's only apparent. And it's clear that small details were missed. Like really easy to spot details that if like your survey team did NASBIL and figured that out, it would work. And so I just, I would ask this body to be, have a little more of a critical eye. Because the reality is, if they're messing up the small things, what about the big things? I mean, that is common sense. And I appreciate the relationship that we do good work. But we literally should be promoting the vendors that actually do their job on time and under budget and not being, taking people's promises that things are going to be okay. We have a responsibility to the taxpayer. We have responsibility to the folks that voted the bond. And right now, we look like clowns. They voted a very expensive bond for an animal facility. It was very contentious, and it ain't going to be on time. We just look stupid. I don't know how else to say that. I would not reward the vendor with another contract. I would deal with this one and then be done. That's just my, my, my critical eye. There are a lot of vendors who are out of work because this recession that we were just talking about is starting to happen. Let's, let's look at somebody else. That would be my opinion. As you said, Mayor, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, timeouts are healthy. Timeout would have somebody taking our business a little more seriously. Because this issue is about somebody not taking their job seriously. And at the end of the day, we are the ones who look silly as the people that have to be accountable. And we're not, we can't even get a warranty. We got to have one of our most respected members literally stare somebody down almost to get a warranty that is common sense. That is ridiculous.
Thank you, Mayor. Darren, there's a question for you. Is his verbal agreement that the warranty will be extended binding in any way?
No. The, the only way the contract can be amended to do that would be in writing.
Okay. Then perhaps we get that in writing first?
Is that what you recommend?
Make the award contingent upon, get that confirmation in writing, and then you're good, seal it up.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we could.
Okay.
We can put a contingency.
Okay. So we would need to amend this to, okay. Then I'll, go ahead and make that, yeah. Perfect. Yeah. So Mayor, I'll, I'll move that we amend this item to include the contingency that the warranty is extended in the, the existing agreement for the animal shelter.
Second. We have a motion and a second to make a motion to amend. Any questions on that motion to amend? I think it's pretty clear. We're, contract will be contingent on that, you know, being changed in the contract. With that, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for a vote on the motion to amend.
Member Hernandez?
Hang on one second. Member Owens?
Restate that for the motion to amend. What is the amendment?
It's to, excuse me, the motion is to amend, to add a contingency on this award that we go back and extend the warranty on the animal shelter piece.
Yes. Simply, simply stated, tonight's award for the, for the guaranteed maximum price is contingent upon them also extending the warranty on the animal controlled shelter.
We could do that?
Yeah. We're, we're adding a contingency.
All right. Madam Secretary, sorry.
They've indicated that that's fine.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
Motion to amend passes.
The, the motion to amend passes six to one. Are there any other questions and comments on the contract itself?
No. No, thank you. I, I thought I had one, but I don't.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we're going to call for the vote on the amended motion.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Berry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Nay.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, we'll move to item number five, and I'm just gonna, could you present that, please?
Mayor, I apologize. I hate to do this to you, but on the property tax rate that you adopted six to one, there's language in the memo that's specific that has to be used that calls that out. So I can ask you to do that again with that required language?
We would need it.
An emotional reconsider.
One of the, one of the six members who supported it would have to make a motion to reconsider and then bring that back because if you recall, oops, I just lost my computer. There's language in the policy section, recommendation section of specific statutory language required in that motion. And so that needs to be part of that motion.
Make a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
We have a second. That's not debatable. We'll vote on that. Madam Secretary?
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
All right. With that, Mr. Coker, would you give us the specific language? And Mr. Kamkar, would you mind making the motion? You made the original motion based on the language that he gives.
Darren, is this item number two? Yes, sir.
Yes, this is the tax rate ordinance and the statutory language, it requires that, the language in there, it says, "I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate."
You're gonna say that bit, right?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna say the first line. You're gonna say the rest of that bit?
If you would, if you would like me to shut up, I will.
Oh, no, I don't want to say any of that.
Okay, I'd be happy to do this and then there can be a so moved.
I'll say, I'll say the ordinance. You say the other bit. I don't want to be on the record on that.
That's fine.
So, all right. Consideration, possible action, second reading of ordinance number 1620, so moved.
Yes, and Mayor and council members, that would include a motion also to move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.623765, which is effectively a 14.86% increase in tax rate.
Second.
Darren, real quick, for cleanup item, does this invalidate the other previous motion? Or is that gonna be in the record that the motion failed to amend?
All of them will be in the minutes and part of the record.
Okay, all right. I don't want to elongate the proceeding if I don't have to. I've got my.
I appreciate that. Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we're back to item number five. Ms. Cade, would you present it, please?
Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number 2000M-232, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Quick staff report?
This is a second reading for an item rezoned that you had passed previously. This is for four parcels that are related, but keeping it residential to a townhome district designation. Nothing to add.
All right. Any questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Cade?
No.
Member Barry?
No.
Member Owens?
Nope.
Member Coza?
Nope.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Nay.
Sorry, what was that?
Nay.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion fails two to five.
All right. All right. Member Barry, if you would, we're gonna present the consent agenda with the exceptions. So it's gonna be A through, what is it, A through X with the exceptions of B is in boy, J is in Juliette, W is in whiskey. Thinking ahead.
I'm trying to recall how many we had tonight. It was quite a few. Make a motion to approve, make a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through X with the exception of items B, J, and W.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Matters to be removed from the consent agenda, so we'll follow up. Item number B. It is, it was boiled surface water treatment plant update. There's no actual vote on that. So Member Kamkar pulls that so he get his three questions in.
I got my three questions. You want to even do one? Do you want to show it or do you want me to just ask you the three questions?
Ask me your questions. Ask me.
I'm just trying to save it. Nobody wants to go home, have beverage. Are we, what is the delivery right now for the plant?
Delivery for water in the system is still scheduled for June of this year, of 2023. Substantial completion October 2023.
Have we moved off any of those subquestions?
Not as of the publishing.
Is the, is our current financial position, have we had any more work change decisions?
No owner-directed costs that would amend or change the budget at this time.
Okay, so Darren, is our financial position, what are we on the hook for right now? What is the C Mar on the hook for and what are we on the hook for?
The city is on the hook for any owner-initiated changes, as is previously indicated. And then there may be changes at the direction or at the request of the C Mar. And those would be on the C Mar's response.
But we haven't received any, any cost increases?
No cost increases from the construction manager at risk. And if there isn't, he's only allotted time.
All right, Mayor, I appreciate you indulging. Thank you.
Anytime. Thank you, Mr. Kamkar. With that, would you present, oh, I'm actually, I'm back to Mr. Coza. Would you present item J, please?
Sure will, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R2022, S214, so moved. Second.
A motion and a second, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and council. We've been in new fire station number two and three for many years. We have experienced, though, certain issues with the HVAC system. And the, it's been identified and designed. This is the contract for the fix towards those. And get both of those back in line for the long haul. Nothing to add.
All right. With that, I want to turn to Mr. Kamkar. I believe you're the one that pulled this.
Mayor, I have a question. We had some HVAC issues with one of the fire stations. Was this one of those two? Was this that one or are these two different ones?
This is one of them.
So two of them. It stations two and three.
But the one that we had, I think it was six or seven months ago, that it was a contentious.
I think this is the follow-through towards that.
Yes, Councilman Kamkar, just to, these are fire stations two and three that we've had a lot of discussion over the past couple of years. We've also done, are currently in construction and fire station two for repairs associated with drainage, concrete slabs. There was a big discussion on that. That's what you're talking about. Part of that discussion is also, that was civil work. This one is now mechanical work that is then taken care of with regards to this, to re-insulate, redo some of the duck work, do the repairs and making sure then that we are then operating the system in the parameters as designed.
In your memo, on the page six of the memo associated with item J, it had all the bids from PMGR at 204,000 all the way down to 385. Where did we end up in that piece? Because this number 355 is obviously referencing two different, you know, it's across two different projects.
Hold on. Give me one moment.
You got it. It's on the second page of the memo from Sergio. It was included.
Because we're, let's see. So combined between the two projects, because there's two bids, PMGR is gonna be awarded those.
And so I'm guessing 204 is going to, I guess, Station Two and then the balance of this 355 is going to Station Three?
Yes, that's correct.
You good?
I got it out there, so, all right.
Any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Member Kamkar, back to you. Would you present item W, please?
W as in wagon, yes. Consideration, possible action, resolution number R2022-227, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, staff report?
This is a award of a piece of equipment that's been budgeted for a front-end loader, a replacement, and it off the byboard. Nothing to add, sir.
With that, I'll turn to Mr. Coza who pulled this.
Yes, Robert, on this piece of equipment here, what exactly is its function? What do we use it for?
Sure. So, Councilman Coza, thank you for the question. With regards to this, it's utilized out of the streets department for material handling and also associated work, sometimes in our emergency response as well. We've used it in that. But it's material handling, working with our streets to remove materials from some street repairs that we do. And then also, as those materials are transferred around, we utilize that piece of equipment.
All right. And as far as the utilization of this piece of equipment, we've owned it for approximately 14 years. We've only put 1,500 hours on it. With that, most equipment goes, for rental stakes, about 5,000 to 6,000. Companies that own equipment goes a lot further than that. What have, what have we done in the way of maintenance? What have we done to beat this thing up? Because for 1,500 hours, that's approximately 13 days a year over the 14 years. And me, it just doesn't feel like it's been taken care of.
There's, to answer your question a little bit more in detail, please remember also is that one of the items that we've talked about that was recently passed with this new budget has been that drainage crew. You know, streets and drainage, we've talked quite a bit about having to do things, bind on the department. This now with, remember, this piece of equipment was purchased 14 years ago. It has aged out. I know, I understand on hours, but we use it for materials, moving materials around. It is one of our larger pieces of equipment. The plan moving forward with the new piece of equipment, now having streets solely dedicated, working on that is to enhance that with its attachments, broom sweep and the fork, to get more into the street repairs now that you've also authorized, have previously purchased our Bowmag, which is our laydown for asphalt and our street roller, steel drum roller, et cetera, is to get that and start enhancing and utilizing that equipment more. What we're experiencing now is a lot of hydraulic age-related items, steering. The bucket is not responding in terms of articulating correctly and we're losing seals in our hydraulics and our pistons.
I understand that, but that's such stuff that can be replaced at a lot less expense than $240,000 or $238,000. And that's where, to me, the hour usage is a problem because we haven't gotten anything. It would have been better for us to rent this over this time period that we needed than it was to actually purchase it. We would have come way cheaper. And to me, looking at this piece of equipment and moving forward, if we spend $240,000, it should last longer than, I mean, 1,500 hours. The year aged out doesn't mean anything to me, especially in equipment. It's hours used. It's not, not years owned.
Do you have anything else?
Go right ahead. I mean, I.
I just, I thought you were.
No, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I just, we just had a big discussion about moving the ball forward and we just spent $110 million. Now we're arguing about 240. I just, that just strikes me real, like, the thing's 14 years old.
You can say it's 240, but the last budget we had 99 million and you approved 7 million of it. So with that, if you add these type things up, that's how you get there. Not just sitting here approving it. Because to me, the utilization and the maintenance on this piece of equipment, if you don't take care of it, you tear stuff up quickly.
Any other questions, comments?
What happens to the one that's 14 years old? Where is that one gonna go?
So should this be approved tonight, then that piece of equipment will be put up for auction? And then any proceeds then will be replaced into the motor pool fund?
Is the, what is the anticipated price you will get for it at auction, please?
I do not have an answer for that.
Thank you.
I wouldn't do not. The original purchase price on that in 20, in 2008 was about $114,000.
There's not like a Kelley Blue Book of, of heavy equipment or, all right.
No.
All right, thank you.
Hernandez?
It's a great question. I just wanted to say that I still love the vehicle data sheets. Thank you so much for creating these. Continue doing these in perpetuity. They're very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, looking at page four of eight, it's the exhibit A. I mean, it shows a first-year unlimited hour warranty and year two and three of 5,000-hour powertrain and hydraulics. So I guess I still have this gap. We've got 1,500 hours and we're replacing it. Is it lack of maintenance?
So I'm not gonna be able to disagree with the amount of hours that are sitting on the machine. That's correct. And we have in place today more, better contract services to be able to maintain our equipment, do those things. Those are things that we are improving and we're going through with our fleet services. So I can't, I can't argue with what's on the vehicle data sheet.
The only thing I might add too, just looking forward in the head, we are here with this 14-year-old with less hours. But we do have, as referenced, intentions to man up, staff up the drainage crew and a lot more work. So, you know, if that's any consolation, that's where we're looking ahead towards.
Yeah, I mean, I get it, I think. I mean, this is why the internal service funds and more the housekeeping of this budget funded was to stay on top of the source stuff. And this is clearly something that hasn't been well-maintained. I guess Robert won't say it, but, yeah. If it's not working with only 1,500 hours, something, something's wrong. So I'm, I'm glad we've, we've made the strides we have. And this is, clearly points to one of the reasons why we need to have that.
Yeah, clearly, the last, three out of the last four years have not been good for this machine. Its utilization and everything else is way down. Cost to maintain it has gone way up, which tells me it wasn't maintained early on. And, yeah, yeah. And the data sheets seem to, seem to show that. So with that, any other questions, comments? Barry, you're reaching?
Well, if we see it, I know that you guys saw it, right? And so what have, what steps are y'all gonna put in place to make sure that we have a maintenance program? And also too, I mean, why, maybe we should consider leasing items like this. I know we have a drainage crew and things of that sort. Why, why not fix the hydraulics on this one, buy another one if we're gonna have that much work? That's more work that's being done on the street and drainage crew. So use it to augment our, our motor pool, so to speak, our equipment.
Some of the things associated when we start getting into heavier equipment as it ages out, sometimes those parts can be harder to find. Parts do become more expensive. But working towards that, I mean, I can understand, I can understand every, your questions in regards. I can't debate hours. But I am looking forward is that, moving forward with the streets crew, with the drainage being separated as per what's with the budget, being able to, with the attachments that are purchased as part of this, that are not part of the current loader right now. So we'd be looking at besides the bucket, forks, and then also a broom or dry broom sweep to be able to utilize while we're milling up, milling up asphalt and those repairs to sweep and keep our areas clean. All those will come in to enhance and move forward with our streets development program and repair program.
So to restate, I think the logic is, it's better to have one new equipment that can handle all those different things and. So to restate, I think the logic is, it's better to have one new equipment that can handle all those different things, and that, and, uh, another piece that has that much age on it that we'd have to put more money into, so.
Okay. Member Kamkar?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Uh, how do we, um, I guess, Robert, how do we find out that we have a machine that's in this scenario, low hours, high cost, or high maintenance? Like, I guess, I'm very aware, we just approved the fleet fund. And it's like, does this go in the fleet maintenance, or how does this work? Cause I bet you there's a lot of other machines in this, this ballgame, whether it be a, a motor vehicle, or maybe in a piece of equipment. And I just, it struggles because we have employees, and we talk about wages and all this other stuff. This, this thing, three of these is 1%. It's $750,000 of 1% cola across the board for everybody. I mean, that, that's a chunk. And so I, I'm not going to come beat you up. We already let the cat out of the bag and spent a ton of money today. But, I guess my question is, is how do we detect vehicles like this that are in this category of low, low usage, but is moving towards a replacement? Like, how do we, what's the system loop that catches us?
So one of the things that we, um, one of the things that we do on the fleet side is that we do review annually with our, our customers. And I said our, our rest of our departments, how they're using those vehicles. Uh, one of the things that we're looking toward is we are reviewing our motor pool policy, motor pool fund, is to be able to rotate those vehicles around to make sure that we balance that out. But that also comes with a catch too, is that all of a sudden, all my vehicles then would be at the same mileage at the same time. There is a catch between that, and that's part of that balance that our fleet department is working with.
To clarify, this item is not in like-
It's a heavy, this is a heavy piece of equipment.
Oh, it's not in like the fleet machine?
It's, it's, it's in the fleet motor pool, but it's a heavy piece of equipment. It's a loader, uh, similar to an excavator, uh, to a, uh, Vector truck or a asphalt laydown machine. It, it's a heavy piece of equipment, and if, um, unfortunately, I will say, this one probably sat in those odd years, those years prior to this, sat not being utilized because our focus was different with a different staff and a different mentality back-
I appreciate the members, Carbone and, and, um, and Coza are on this. I, I, I think it's important, I would, I would ask the council that maybe we have an agenda item as we get a little bit further this year of, what is the policy to review this? Cause I'm guessing with, we have what, a few hundred vehicles? Between heavy machinery and motor vehicles and other, this isn't the only ones like this. I know in some of the fire stuff, maybe we've had, at, at one point where we got to be, recently buy a lot of vehicles. I would like to think that there's more of a process of how do we analyze what's being under user, underutilized and what's being over?
I've got a question on that.
Yeah, so.
I actually have a question on that, brought it up. I mean, we should, and I would imagine our new asset management software, is that being utilized, some of this to-
It would be, Mayor, it'd be with our fleet software, um, with Faster. Um, they track that and look at that, and that is part of what also sets up when we meet with the City Manager's Office and meet with our departments, what vehicles are slated for replacement, whether they fall above or below, and they're looked at multiple things.
That might help on, ongoing. Can't do anything about what happened in the past.
Yes, sir.
We can help on moving forward.
I, I would just ask that maybe we consider that in a slower time period. What does that policy look like? But I agree with you, we, we are where we are with this item. It has to be dispensed with, but, um, it just feels like maybe there were some places where we could have done better. We wouldn't have this issue today.
Well said. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote.
Member Kamkar?
No.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Cade?
Aye.
Member Barry?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Coza?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passes five to two.
Alright, with that, we will move to matters removed, well, Matters Removed Consented just did that. Other business? There are none. Mayor Council issues for City Council discussion. Uh, I placed this item for council discussion and input. There's no voting tonight, just want some input on it. Uh, amend the finance policy to only allow budget amendments twice a year. One, budget, first one would be budget carryovers, which we normally do end of October, early November. Uh, and two, mid-year budget adjustments. Uh, any other amendment, uh, will only be allowed if the city is under a, a declared emergency. We'll need three-quarters vote of the council. Um, if you would, please put my, Josh, please put my supplemental up real quick. Well, I brought this up, uh, historically here at the City of Pearland, um, we've only had two budget amendments every year. Uh, but this last year, um, we had six. And it, it bothers me that we're continually, um, amending a budget. Uh, I don't, I don't think that's how you should run your business. I certainly don't think that's how we should be, uh, managing our budgets, and, and budget amendments are necessary. Uh, they are necessary from time to time, but we amended our budgets by increasing the budget, uh, 7.4 million in expenses and almost 5.4, uh, in revenue. So, and we were doing this literally every other month, uh, through, through June. So, uh, I just don't think it's a healthy way to, uh, run your budgets. Uh, we pass a budget, uh, and doing them, um, this many times during the course of the year, I just don't think it's good business. I'd like to see us have a discussion around this and, and potentially make a, uh, amendment to our finance policy. Obviously, it would take four members to, you know, kind of move in that direction. Uh, and again, I, you know, I'll ask, I'll ask Clay a quick question. Uh, is, is what we normally do, uh, two times a year, is that what's been the norm? Or when was the last time you saw six amendments in a year?
Yeah, so just, uh, the Pearland experience in, in my time with y'all has, has been the, the traditional, uh, rollovers, and then a true-up in the summer, so too. Uh, and that's been the past, other places I've been as well, uh, a very limited number for the reasons basically you stated.
So I'll just throw it open for questions and comments. Uh, again, it would take four members, uh, kind of giving staff some direction on wanting to move in this direction. I just threw it out here as, we've been talking about budgets and wanting to hold a, a, a line on budgets, but yet this last year, we amended this budget every other month, uh, six times during the course of the year. Member Coza?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I, I would be in favor of this. Uh, me, what happened right here, uh, is kind of a switch and bait. You pass a budget and you turn around and you add 7% to it, instead of owning up to the taxpayers at the front end and saying, here's what it is. To me, that's disgraceful.
Uh, I have a question. What do we define as amendment? I like to be more information gathering. I, I have a strict constructionist viewpoint, uh, in my mind, but what, I understand the carryover, I understand mid-year, there's a point where the state distributes funds back on sales tax, and we get one-off federal dollars from some weird settlement of something or other, but, uh, what, what constitutes amendment?
So, so I'm not being trite, I'm just being clear. Uh, the council adopts a budget, and it's an expenditure maximum by fund. That's what you do. And so the amendment is to increase or decrease, uh, the fund level, uh, budget expenditure maximum. That's all.
I, I don't want to be trite, but we, we have a lot of sources and uses of cash, right? So, federal money sprinkles down, goes into the general funds. Um, the way I read this, can't do anything with it. And can't amend, it doesn't hit these three criteria, or you need three-quarters of a vote. The other thing I would think through is, what happens if you change? Mr. John Robach says we want to go do debt. Debt's way cheaper now. It's not right now with Jerome Powell opening his mouth every few months, but, um, he starts opening his mouth, sources and uses change because those funds have debt in general funds. The way I read this, we can't go do COs. Where you have to say that the CO number for this fund, because at the beginning of that budget page, says that the tax rate is funded by only so much debt.
Not, not quite. Um, when we issue, if we do refunding, that would, uh, affect the following year's budgets because of the, uh, impact of those.
What happens if you say, we want to preserve cash because we're in a inordinate time or an uncertain time, and so we want to CO something? CO feels like, because you're changing, we adopted a budget, maybe using cash from the general fund that we collect on Jan 1 from Mom and Dad or businesses, and now we're saying we want to use COs, that's in a different fund. And so I would read this as a strict constructionist. We would really be curtailing the use of COs, which I'm in favor of and would be heavily interested in considering. If we're going to go down this route, because the fund is changing, the composition of the budget changed.
Yeah, so we actually, I can't remember any time we've switched into, uh, COs, uh, but to your larger point, uh, we have in the past, uh, and, and it's just normal. If there was an expenditure, we would, uh, make that allocation and then say, note that the actual budget amendment will catch up to that at the one of two times a year when we do that. We've done that, we do that all the time.
But I would, I would tell you, it doesn't fit that box cleanly. And so I would just tell you that there's unintended consequences on funding, because there's, we, we have a budget. It's not just one bucket. There's an enterprise fund, there's a debt fund, uh, there's general obligation, uh, bonds that we vote. And the amounts could change. That necessitates an amendment, which would really curtail, or the source and use of cash. Where, what bucket does it come from? If we can do less COs and it's using this tool, I'm very supportive of that.
So, I, I, I heard a lot of noise there, so let's talk about, uh, the reality of how we do things. Uh, we know right now in this budget what we're going to spend money on. Is that correct?
Yes, we have the, we have the expenditure maximum by fund, and you have a budget document to support that.
And we have a CIP budget that we've approved, and yes, all of those numbers can, can change. And they do. They, I mean, they do. They, that, that happens every year. Uh, so when we go to, uh, debt, I mean, it's all trued up at the time that we do the debt issuance. It doesn't go through an amendment. It goes through the time that we do, uh, the actual debt issuance. Uh, or, sometimes we, we do, we do the first half of a project, we issue that debt, and then we'll do, uh, the rest of that debt in a separate budget, in a separate budget time or separate CIP. Uh, same thing with COs. We don't wake up one day and say, let's just go do COs. I've, I've never seen the city just wake up and go do that in a month or two-month period. You know, so, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, I just don't think it is a, a good way to do your business, amending your budget six times over the course of the year. I just don't think that's a good way to do things. Uh, and yeah, I'm trying to put handcuffs on our council, I'm trying to put handcuffs on, uh, our, our own, uh, we, we can actually declare an emergency. We have the ability in our charter to declare emergency. I'm not talking about an emergency that the governor, the president, or anybody like that has declared, but we, as the city council, have, Darren, correct me, we have some broad discretion in declaring an emergency. So we have the ability to do that. I also think in those times, it should be, um, three-fourths vote. It should be that important that your council is in lockstep with each other. Some of these votes were 5-3, 4-3, 5-2, 4-3. Um, and, and yeah, I think it, we ought to be more business-minded in how we do our budgets and how we do, you know, all of these things. And so I, 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 I brought it up. I don't vote on this. I've got one member that's got some heartburn over it, and I hear, and I hear your issues.
I, I think it's, it's unintended consequences, because-
I don't want those.
Um, I, I think we are spending a lot in our enterprise funds. Amounts could change up or down, and this is, and this causes less flexibility with that. But there may be a point where we have different sources come in, and I think we have to be conscientious. If we did CO reform, I would, I would, I would, I would be tickled pink. I proposed and got passed two years ago. We had to have certain items be on a 30-year maturity. And then the staff said, uh, actually, this is less flexible, and then brought something to us, and we undid that. Wasn't happy about it, but I lost the vote. That's fine. If they're willing to absorb this and, and hold to this, I'm actually supportive of that. They have to be understanding that you got two goes. What I don't like is a three-quarter vote. I understand it's an emergency procedure, but I feel like, you know, in almost every other item, it's a majority vote except for this tax item, which is a 60, and that's almost close to a supermajority. But tho, those are where I have heartburn. If the staff is supportive of, of these, uh, of these consequences, good and bad, which I think if we can curtail and we can say at the beginning of a budget, we're only going to sell this many COs, hey, I'm on board. Sign me up. Just understand, we are putting hard, hard handcuffs in this. I would prefer this be a charter amendment. This feels like a charter thing to me, but just my, my vantage point, but, you know, nonetheless, it's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I think it's good to limit the number of amendments, so I'm in favor.
The other thing I would ask is, uh, and the mayor touched on this a little bit, with the emergency declaration, um, that can be a simple executive order, correct, or?
No, and, and I just want to make sure it's clear. So even the charter contemplates council passing things, uh, on a declared emergency, and that means within the, within the caption of your ordinance, you're declaring an emergency, meaning that you feel like, uh, the, the interest of the public, safety, health, welfare of the community is so important that you're going to pass it as a once and only reading, then the courts have ruled that that's in your discretion as a body. If a majority of you believe it is an emergency, then it is, and it in fact is an emergency. But, in order to do that per our charter, it does require a three-fourths vote of the city council. So that would require six out of seven votes.
Okay, got it. That, that-
And the three-fourths, and the three-fourths with an emergency vote is what our charter already states.
Correct.
I'm only restating-
Okay, good, good. Alright, um, I mean, I, I, I think most of, uh, the extra amendments that we had in the past, you know, year, were because, I mean, we're just a tumultuous state. Um, and I imagine we could take that into consideration if we did any changes, so I'm not, uh, against this as is. I'm sure we'll have more discussion input on this, um, but I would like to-
Actual language needs to come back.
Well, right, yeah, and, and I guess I would like to kind of hear a little bit more from, uh, maybe Clay on what your initial reaction to this is.
Sure.
Again, we, we function with, uh, the two that I can think of for 10 years here, eight years here, and everywhere else, so. And again, if we do have something that the council identifies the priority wants to do that, uh, we've, we've made the, uh, the, uh, award of a contract and then said, we're going to follow up with the actual budget amendment thereafter. So, and that's been kosher with Darren, and we've done that several times, so. We don't have to do a, a budget amendment for those. Keep amending the budget.
Sounds, sounds fine to me then. Thank you, Mayor.
I just have one question. Does this really, will this actually change the number of amendments, or just when you can do them?
No, it should change the number of amendments.
We would do the two. We, we have, we need to do one shortly after the first year in the first quarter of November that does the rollovers. We need some time to digest, understand all that. And if there's any other cleanups or things like that, and then one in July that trues up from our estimates for the current fiscal year before we go into the next budget.
And that one also is, we're over halfway through the budget, and so we do have things that, uh, aren't going to happen in this fund that we can then amend the budget and move those dollars around to other programs. And it would just be done in June, July as opposed to multiple times during the year. Anything else? Darren?
Darren, I've got a, if, if everybody, I don't want to, uh, one thing I would, I would submit, when I'm just trying to think through the mechanics of this, would be, council members can submit amendments to the budget we voted on, because right now this then throws a lot of, um, a lot of, uh, priority into what the staff, essentially, they're getting an up or down vote. And I think if we are going to tie the sta, the hands of the council, council should be at least able, knowing that those two thresholds, maybe January or February, June or July, be able to submit budget amendments, assuming that they follow the normal process to get an agenda item up for an up or down. Um, I think, I think that gets the person, if they say, well, I'll, I'll bind my hands, but I at least want to vote on something I may see as a priority. Member Barry might see something around windstorm. Member, uh, you know, Hernandez may see something around Parks and Rec or something to that extent. Um, I at least would, would think that that might be worthy, that we can decide amongst ourselves, and if we're going to curtail the timeframe, at least we can get a vote, uh, on something we may find a priority as opposed to, as you said, doing seven different times and hoping you catch.
No, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. We would be in a rhythm of when these, when these happen, and that's when you would-
You're 30 days out, 45 days out.
Right.
Here's two people, they would like to submit this amendment.
Right.
Staff has time to write a memo.
Just, just to be clear, when, when, I think every time we've done a budget amendment, uh, in the normal course, we've shared that at advance for a packet item, so, you know, that'd be a flag, and it, yeah, it's just to-
45 days out.
Note that, so.
Mayor, one more question real quick. Um, three-quarters vote?
Six.
Is it?
Yeah, that's six. It's five point something.
It's 5.2.
It's five, yeah, but you have to go round up. You can't, since we can't get two tenths of a person.
We start topping limbs.
I'm going to hold your arm up. Could we draw on that and see if that would be, are you amenable to adding that? I know that this is language that's presented.
On what you
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's not disallowed. That would just be, it would be done under these two time periods.
Yeah.
You can, you can submit a budget amendment anytime you want, it's just this is when it's going to be considered. So if we, we, we get budget amendment information in our Thursday package, generally speaking, 45 days to two months prior to passage. So that's
The only, the only thing I say is that whenever the, the items, at least at the time that I've been here and some members have been here longer than I have, it's usually been, here's six items and it's 1.1 million. And then these are the six. And I'm, I want the ability for the members to at least be able to tag on to that item and say, I submitted, I had two at least and it's on there and maybe they vote.
I think that, that's already
You have that right already to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you have that right to do that with these.
Mayor, one thing you may want to take into consideration, just make a referral to the audit committee. And since I would assume that you were thinking about a amendment to the financial policies and that's where those typically goes, so.
We've got a meeting coming up in two weeks.
Yeah.
Week and a half, something like that. So what I would request, I heard enough people saying, let's kind of look in this direction, Darren and the audit and the financial side to maybe come up with some language. Obviously I wrote this, I didn't legalize it, so let's get the legalese behind it and I, I hear enough people at least to bring it back and have a vote on it. And, and I, you know, then we can amend it or whatever, we want to see the language happen. So, all right. With that, we will move to adjournment and we will adjourn at 8:48.